Good evening, the time is seven oh three on Monday, September ninth. I would like to call to order the special meeting of the Norwalk Council, Common Council. If you'll please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to our nation's flag. Thank you. Ms. Dixon, if you'll please call the role.
Mr. Burnett.
Present.
Mr. Goldstein. Mr. Lopez.
Here.
Ms. Najelski Eichner.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Ayers. Mr. Seed. Mr. Wiggins.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Ms. Edie.
Here.
Ms. Dunn. Mr. Sutton.
Present.
Mr. Frere. Ms. Shanahan. We have eight, we have a quorum.
Okay. So now we open this up to public comment. There's anybody in the audience that wishes to address the council? You can sign in and announce your intentions to address us. Okay, is, uh, is there anybody online? James? Nobody's raising their hand online. Alright, so I will close public session and I will turn the floor over to Steve Mednick, who is our consultant on the charter revision process.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my pleasure to be here with members of the council, both here and on Zoom, and members of the public who are watching this, this event. This is the last of three pre-charter sessions that the council has conducted. I think you're about on, on the edge and the verge of creating a new charter commission. And as you may remember, we started back in June with the discussion of the role of the legislative body, this body, the council. Um, we then moved in July to discuss the budget process and discuss the Norwalk model with regard to budget development and other models in the cities throughout the state of Connecticut. And tonight we conclude with the role of the mayor. Uh, it's not the last but not least thing, it's the chief executive officer. Um, the theme of these sessions really, and the essence of any charter document is a balance of power. And that, I think, is the essence of all three sessions that we have been, um, that we've, we've engaged in. And that is really the essence of writing a good constitutional document, a charter, a constitution for the state or the federal government. Um, and you want to make sure, I've, I've talked about this before, so those members of the council have heard this spiel. Uh, indulge me for just less than a minute. Uh, you want a document that can be understood by the voters and by the government officials alike. Both of you need a document that is understandable. It's flexible enough to meet the challenges of local government, where the mayor and the council all both know their respective roles. It's important to know the role, what, what their lanes are, stay in their lanes, and emerge at the end of the process with a consensus on how, uh, the mayor and the council can deliver services to the public. And then finally, you want a document that really fosters accountability for elected officials. I, uh, and, and, uh, which is really important. You want clear lines of distinction, so the members of the public can be fully informed on what their elected officials are doing in their name. And that's really critical. As someone who spends a lot of time revising charters, I focus much of that time on this central relationship. Uh, and why is that, somebody may ask? And it's, and it's because the only two required provisions of a charter, and Carl probably remembers me saying this during charter revision, are the executive and the legislative branch. All the other language in the charter is extraneous. You can do it by ordinance, you could adopt statutes that govern those things, you could do it by budget. Uh, the only two critical, uh, um, and required provisions under state law are to name an executive, here you have a mayor, and like, and a legislative body, here you have a council. And that's really, really important. So from my perspective, as we move from these discussions at the council to, uh, in paneling a new charter revision commission, these functions need to be laid out clearly, and we need to create rules that permit the officials, uh, in the executive and legislative functions, uh, to do their jobs for the public. And it's really, I think, the greatest challenge any commission faces, and then ultimately the council will face before this goes to the voters in November of 2025. Um, I'm, I'm thrilled tonight, uh, we're gonna have a smaller panel tonight than we expected. Uh, one of the problems is Mayor Rilling will tell you, and Mayor Broning will tell you, and I'm sure, uh, President, uh, Walker Myers will tell you, who's, who's survived three mayors as president of, of the New Haven Board of Alders, Alders, Alders is, uh, mayor's jobs are never done. Uh, one of our mayors, uh, had a family issue that came up this night, so it was kind of a non-mayoral, uh, matter. Uh, my hometown of Waterbury, so I was, uh, uh, Paul Pernaruski was actually my first charter chairman. He was the chairman back in, uh, two thousand and two, uh, during the Waterbury financial crisis, was, uh, got a start in politics as chairman of this charter commission. So, uh, he's a wonderful guy. And then one of our, our fine young mayors, uh, the mayor knows quite well, Ben Florshaim, um, had an enormous public tragedy in their community. Uh, we've all been reading about or hearing about the plane crash in Vermont. It involved a Middletown schoolteacher, Middletown student, and family members. Um, and so the mayor clearly, um, had reason to be in Middletown, could not join us this evening. Um, but I'm really thrilled because we, we have our old mayor here, um, Mayor Rilling. So not much I'm gonna have to say about him. Um, I think you all know, uh, Mayor Rilling. Uh, but I, I think the important things I want to start with when I, when it comes to Mayor Rilling is that he's a lifelong resident, born and bred, right, here in Norwalk, which is a
Absolutely.
which is a wonderful thing, and, and more unusual than you think, um, in the world we live in today. Um, he's got, again, important three children, um, uh, seven grandchildren. Those are the important things, and, um, and, and he's had a life of service, uh, which is something that I, uh, always admire in public figures, is, uh, somebody who's spent their life serving the public. And it's been my honor in the last three years or so that I've been working in Norwalk, uh, to work with the mayor, while mayors don't have direct responsibility for charter revision. Uh, Mayor Rilling has been directly involved and paid a lot of attention to everything that the first commission did, and I suspect will be paying a lot of attention to the next commission. Uh, it's my honor to introduce to you your mayor.
Thank you. I feel I don't have to go into any great detail because I have the council members here. I see three people in the audience that know a lot about the process and a lot about the mayor's job. Uh, Bruce was on the council on the Board of Education. Uh, Carl was on the last charter revision, and John's been around for a long time. So, uh, I think we pretty much know each other and know each other well. Uh, and as I said, I work with the council on a regular basis. And, you know, they say all politics is local. Uh, well, you know, in this case, it really is because, you know, you don't often see the governor of the state out on the street, you don't often see the president of the United States, but you see the mayor, you see your council people, and you have an opportunity to interact with them in everyday activities. I go to the grocery store, I go to, uh, go out to eat with my wife, and, you know, people approach, and, you know, it's part of the job, and I, we enjoy it because it gets us to know who the constituents are. And that's really, I think, one of the, one of the most important, uh, duties that a mayor has is to know the people that elected him, know the people that work, uh, that he works for, or her, she works for. And, uh, you know, get to, uh, get to work more closely and understand what the needs of the city are. So in Norwalk, as we all know, uh, we have a, a mayor that's elected by the people. The, uh, term is for a period of two years, and the mayor is the chief executive officer of the town of, of the city. And therefore, the mayor has to, uh, run, pretty much run the day-to-day operations of the city and meet with the department heads, meet with the cabinet. In Norwalk, not too far in the distant past, we kind of reorganized the city government. We went from nineteen department heads reporting directly to the mayor to a cabinet form of government with a chief financial officer, chief of operations, uh, chief of economic and community development, chief of community services, uh, chief of staff, and also obviously the police and the fire chief. So we meet every Monday morning, uh, to discuss the projects that are ongoing and the projects that we maybe see coming down the road in the, in the future, what their, what their vision is, what they're, what they're planning on doing. We meet then in the afternoon with one of those chiefs' staff on Monday afternoon. So every Monday afternoon, we're meeting with either operations or finance or, uh, community services, uh, economic development to have a, a better understanding and a relationship with them, so they don't feel that, uh, you know, they're distanced from, uh, from the executive office. So, um, the, there, there's always a question, uh, whether or not, what form of government Norwalk has. Norwalk has a council-mayor form of government, mayor-council form of government. It's not a weak mayor, it's not a strong mayor. A weak mayor doesn't get elected by the public and doesn't have power of veto. So we want to make sure that people understand that. Going beyond the mayor's office, and, 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 you know, you're, you're right, Steve, the mayor's job is never over. Um, if we're not going to, um, meetings, if we're not going to events, um, if we're not meeting with the public, uh, we're going to different, um, events that are put on by some of the local, uh, organizations. So the mayor, as I said, works, uh, really closely with the council. The council is broken into, uh, different, uh, subcommittees. So they are the legislative body of the city. Uh, they responsible for passing ordinances, uh, and they, uh, adopt and approve the capital and operating budget. Uh, they approve all contracts in excess, in excess of a hundred thousand dollars or with terms over one year. And one of the things I know we're talking about, the budget process with, uh, the council and how they fit into the, into the process. Um, the council, as I mentioned before, they're broken into subcommittees. And the council meets at least once a month with those subcommittees. And I think most council people are on about three or four different subcommittees. Four, so they have a lot of meetings. And during that time is their opportunity to speak with the department heads and ask what their budget process is looking like, what their budget requests are going to be, uh, make recommendations as to, hey, you know, you talked about you wanted, um, this last year, but you didn't get it. Why don't you put that into budget this year and see how that plays out? So after the, they meet with the, the council, or, I'm sorry, the department heads, then, um, they, the, uh, we have what we call the Board of Estiment Taxation. I know Bruce is on that for a long time, I know Greg was on that for quite a while. Um, I think you were his chair at one point.
The B.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I think, Bruce, if you were the chair at one point. Okay, so the budget process, we, i- i- it starts, it, it's gonna be starting, uh, next month, uh, in, in October. And what happens is the find, the chief financial officer puts together a, uh, a proposed budget and meeting with different department heads and looking, asking them to show him or her what they're looking to have. And they submit their budget documents. Then the chief financial officer puts that all together and, and, and goes over it with me uh, and goes over it and, uh, presents it to the Board of Estiment Taxation as a recommended budget based on, uh, uh, requested and, and, and recommended. And then the BET meets individually with every department head and goes over every line item to talk about what that issue, I did, that's quite a lengthy process. It takes, uh, uh, several weeks to get it done right. And then we put together, based on what the BET is recommending at that point, put together, uh, the final budget for presentation, uh, to the council. Uh, the council approves the cap on the, uh, operating budget. And they can approve items on the, uh, uh, capital budget, but they can move money around within the capital budget. They can't increase the amount, they can't add any new, uh, uh, pro, uh, projects or programs, but they can move money around if they feel one is underfunded and, and, uh, perhaps has to be, uh, have to be funded to a greater degree. So on the BET, uh, the members are appointed by the mayor, subject to approval of the council. There are, uh, six members plus the mayor. And no two members on the BET can be from one, any one council district. And not more than, uh, uh, not more than three uh, can be from any one political party. Uh, so that's, uh, the sole function of the BET is to review the city's finances and determine fiscal policy. So, um, that's pretty much, you know, what, what the mayor does in Norwalk. And the, the relationship with the council, relationship with the BET, and that's how the process, uh, is, is as we speak.
Thank you, Mayor. We're gonna hold questions, um, uh, until we get through the three speakers, so it's gonna be a little easier tonight and a little quicker this evening. And if, um, Mayor Bronin is okay with it, I'm going to introduce, um, so the non-mayor who's here tonight, although, um, she's a very important player in the city of New Haven. Uh, Taisha Walker Myers has been, and correct me if I'm wrong, Madam President, been president of the New Haven Board of Alders for ten years now. Um, that's as long as I served on the Board of Alders, uh, in, in my, my day in the eighties and nineties, and I was pro-ten, I never rose to the level of president. Uh, and she's been an outstanding president, runs a great meeting, um, really organizes the body, um, extremely well. Uh, I also think that, uh, and she'll correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sure, that she has served as president with three mayors. I know she has served on the board of Alders with at least three mayors, um, from the time that she started, um, and, um, uh, through now. But I also think she's been president with three mayors, and she'll correct me, um, if that is not correct. So that she has a lot of perspective on the function of the council, the Board of Alders in New Haven, um, in terms of that angle of dealing with the mayor. Um, she also has worked with a thirty-member body. Um, it's, it's not quite like herding cats, although she may dispute that as well. Um, uh, but it's, it's a very difficult job with thirty wards sprawling throughout a large city, where each of the individual members, uh, have a lot of autonomy, um, because it is relatively, um, it's easier to get elected in a district than it is citywide. Um, and the party organization can't really control thirty wards. So you end up with a very strong group of people who have a very strong, um, um, self-esteem, let's, let's say it that way, in terms of how they look at things. And I've worked with her, I worked with her most recently in charter revision, we're going through a big ordinance revision process right now. Um, and I work with a lot of great council presidents around the state. Got one sitting, uh, here with me tonight, and, uh, in Hartford as well. Um, but Taisha is a very strong woman and a really outstanding, um, alderman, alder, uh, president of the Board of Alders. Um, and it's my honor to, um, to introduce, uh, Taisha Walker Myers to all of you. Taisha, you there?
Yes. Thank you, thank you very much. Well, as you all heard, I'm Taisha Walker Myers, I am the president of the Board of Alders, it is thirty orders. I've been a president under two mayors.
Oops, sorry.
Nope, but I served under three mayors. Um, and the Board of Alders comprises of thirty orders, and we represent about five thousand constituents each. Um, and we are the fiscal agent of the city. We do all the ordinances, the mayor proposed the budget, we dispose of the budget. Um, we don't have a Board of Finance, we got rid of that in nineteen ninety-two through the charter revision, so we have a finance committee. Um, in our budget process, we could actually, we can change basically whatever we want. We can add, we can take away, we could put new positions, we can do all of those things through, um, through our process. In two thousand and twelve, we actually changed, and I would say we made, um, through charter revision, we made the Board of Alders and the mayor more, um, equal. Um, but something I really want to talk about is how those relationships work with, um, the different mayors. So as the president of the board, I tried, along with my colleagues, we set a legislative agenda. Those are priorities that we set for the city that come from our constituents. And we work along those lines, so the mayor understands that these are our priorities, so we tend to, um, agree on those priorities, and, um, most of our work come out of, um, them. Um, the two mayors I worked under were totally different than each other, the relationship was different. Um, but the thing that was consistent was me, because I'm, I'm very consistent. I like to run, uh, orderly meeting, I don't like surprises, I love information, I love to read, I want everything. Um, so we actually have good relationships, I've had good relationships with both mayors, the current one and then our previous, um, mayor. Uh, let me see what else I think is really important about our process. Um, I'm kinda like, um, I guess no-nonsense when it comes to running my meetings, I want them ran very professionally, and all the orders understand that, um, that's what we're gonna do. But all in all, I will, um, I'm the type of person that like for you to ask questions, and then I could answer them, because I'm not gonna be able to capture everything, because the mayor did a really good job explaining what all the different entities actually do.
If, if the president doesn't mind, I'm gonna add one thing about the New Haven Board of Alders, uh, and it's true of a number of local legislative bodies. The mayor in New Haven is not the presiding officer, doesn't serve as the presiding officer, same thing is true in Waterbury. Um, uh, and, um, I, and I think Luke will, uh, confirm in Hartford, the mayor does not preside, Bridgeport they preside, Middletown Ben, uh, presides. And, um, and in New Haven, it's very unusual for the mayor to be at a Board of Alders, in the Board of Alders meeting. At least in my day, I don't know if that's changed, Taisha.
No.
State of the city, the mayor comes out once a year officially for the state of the city, and otherwise it runs more like Congress and, um, the presidency, and the president, or the governorship and the General Assembly, um, where the mayor stays on his side of City Hall, the Alders on their side, but they meet somewhere in the middle, um, to
Absolutely.
develop their cooperation, so I just wanted to point that out for the record. Uh, thank you, Taisha, I'm sure there'll be a ton of questions for you in a moment.
Okay.
Last but not least, for sure, um, a lot of people know, uh, the next, um, the next speaker, he's mayor of our capital city for eight years, um, was counsel to, uh, Governor Malloy for a number of years. Um, he is, uh, currently spending some time in the city that I love, New Haven. Uh, Taisha will be pleased about this as well, is a lecturer in law at Yale Law School, uh, which I think, uh, you know, you're, you're an alum, one of our members of the council is a Yale Law alum. And, uh, um, Luke Bronin, uh, was a very creative and imaginative mayor, he was a good mayor, strong mayor um, of the capital city. Um, he inherited the strong mayor system that was adopted in the early part of the century, um, uh, in two thousand and two. And, um, he served, uh, for eight years, um, we did at least one charter revision. Um, and like, like, uh, Mayor Rilling, Mayor Bronin did pay attention. I remember spending, uh, better part of the Fourth of July weekend chatting with him about certain things that he wasn't happy with in our charter, and, and of course, we, uh, we worked it out. He was a fine mayor, he's an outstanding, um, uh, man, and it's been my pleasure over the years uh, to know Luke Bronin, and I'd like to introduce all of you to Mayor Bronin.
Good evening, uh, well, first of all, Steve, thanks so much for that kind introduction. Uh, great to see you and Mayor Rilling and, uh, all the members of the council. It's, uh, it's an honor to be with you tonight, uh, and also to be, uh, together with, uh, President Walker Myers. Um, I'll keep the initial remarks really brief, just so we can get to conversation. Um, Hartford, like New Haven, has a relatively strong, uh, mayor form of government. Uh, we have four-year mayoral te- terms, uh, and, uh, and in the budget, probably we'll come, note, note one thing in the budget process, I think, very similar to, uh, New Haven, uh, you know, there, there are, there is no independent, uh, 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 finance, uh, board. Uh, the mayor and the, and the council share that responsibility. Uh, the, uh, one thing that is interesting about Hartford is that when the mayor submits the budget, the council may make adjustments. If the mayor, uh, rejects those adjustments, and the council actually has to pass, uh, over that objection with a supermajority. Uh, so it is a, a fairly strong, uh, strong mayor system. Happy to talk about that or any other aspect of it, uh, and I imagine that, uh, maybe some discussion about the length of the term as well. But I'll, I'll leave it there, just with, uh, it, it is great to see a, a number of friends, uh, here, and, uh, and I'm, I'm honored to join you.
Thank you, Mayor. So I will, um, pass our, are you gonna preside or? Should the president preside?
Any questions people have?
Uh, just do it that way. So are there any questions for any of the three speakers?
Um, good afternoon, Mr. Bronin, afternoon, evening, what time is it? Geez, time to go home. Um, you talked about the four-year terms. Can you tell me the pros and cons of that, and why you changed it, and how long it's been?
Sure, um, so the four-year term was adopted when the city moved to the strong mayor form of government, uh, back in the early two thousands, as Steve had said. Uh, I was very grateful for the four-year term as mayor. Uh, it gives you some breathing room and the ability to not be consumed by politics or worrying about the election that's just around the corner, as, as you all know very well, and as Mayor Rilling knows very well. Um, I, I think for really the, the entire duration of my time as mayor, I was, uh, I, I was very grateful for that period of time. Uh, the only time when I had some mixed thoughts about it was when it came to the end. Uh, if I'd had the ability to stay on for another two years, I probably would have run again, uh, but I wasn't prepared to decide to, uh, to, to sign up for another four. Uh, but I, I strongly would, I, I would strongly recommend and I would strongly encourage you to consider four-year term. I, I think it allows for the time to just focus on policymaking rather than politics.
And I think Taisha, we've moved to the four-year term in New Haven in the last charter revision, am I correct on that?
Yes.
Mayor's position too?
For mayor, yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that, I thought, uh, New Haven was still two years.
Well, it is currently. Next election.
I got it.
And Taisha, uh, could you just expand on, on why you all decided to do that?
Yes, um, well, part of it was after being on the Board of Alders since two thousand and eleven, we kinda realized that you can't get anything done in two years. Um, government is slow, you start a project today, you might not get it done for four years. So we just thought that we wanted to concentrate on what the constituents wanted and not have to constantly be in election mode, um, all the time. So we're going from two years to four years, because I think that gives us a little bit more time to be effective legislators and be able to actually see, um, certain things you start actually finish. So we had a overwhelming amount of people that thought the four years made sense.
And, and, and can I just expand on that? And so what about the Alders, their positions, are they?
We're going four years as well, it's alder and mayor, we're all going to four-year terms.
And the same goes for you, um, Luke.
That's right. Everybody's four years.
Different towns have gone in different directions, those two cities, they moved in that direction. Waterbury has a four-year term, if you don't mind adding. Uh, Waterbury has a four-year term for mayor, two-year term for the Board of Aldersmen. They are still Aldersmen in Waterbury. And Hampden, which moved in the direction of a four-year term, their next election cycle will be a four-year term. They have a two-year term for their council, and a four-year term for the, the mayor. And, uh, well, I'm sure we'll discuss something.
Nicole Arrows has her hand up. Cole?
Good evening, everybody. Just a follow-up question to the conversation. Um, if anyone could speak on what type of community outreach, um, you had to do to kinda, um, engage the public in understanding the pros and cons of a change from a two-year to four, because Norwalk has tried it, and we have not been successful. And my thinking is part of the reason, it's a small group speaking for everybody, but I don't think we have, um, scratched the surface enough to really, um, get the full public opinion on that. So if either, either of you or anyone has any input in that, I would love to hear it. Thank you.
I could talk a little bit about it, since we just, um, did it in charter revision when, uh, a couple months ago, maybe, or last year. Um, you just gotta get on the doors. It's thirty orders, you just gotta get on the doors and get as You just gotta get on the doors and get as much information out to people as possible and get them to understand the difference and what it means to um, to go four years versus um two years. Because it was some people that had concerns that if we changed to four years, then we wouldn't be out on the doors talking to people and voter turnout will be low. Um, so we'll see if that is actually the reality. Um, but just making sure the voters are informed and explaining the perspective from a legislator, I think was really helpful with us.
That, that, if I might comment, that's a very important point about voter turnout. Um, in the six uh, re- or campaigns I've been involved in, the most of uh, number of voters turned out were like uh just over sixteen thousand, maybe sixteen-five in a town that has fifty thousand registered voters. So I, I think that's certainly it can, it, they, sometimes they don't think that it's, it's an important election.
Can, can I uh point out that um in different communities and Luke was not mayor when this was adopted in two thousand and two? I don't, I, I, I helped write that charter in two thousand and two. I don't remember it being a controversial issue in Hartford, but it had been a very controversial issue in a nu- number of communities. Uh, fourteen years ago, Hampden tried to move in that direction. Um, and they were thwarted for me even putting it on the ballot. Uh, because there was clear public opposition uh in, in Hampden. Hampden put it on the ballot the same year New Haven did um in the last election cycle. And I remember going to uh the council president, who actually spoke in our budget hearing, um Dominique Baez. Um, um, just before we went to vote on the questions and I was still of the frame, frame of mind that maybe we should do a separate question on the four-year term. Um, and she said, no, no, we're not gonna do that. And she was right. There was no, the difference, the sea change in the ten or twelve years between of the cycle, the beginning of the century and um where we are today um was vastly changed. Now, that could be different in Norwalk. We'll find out uh with the new Charter Revision Commission. So I'm sure this is an issue that will come out. Um, but it's um, it's an issue that's uh changed quite a bit. I will say this, Middletown shied away from it four years ago. Um, Ben was just elected mayor and we did a charter revision there and they did not want to touch it. They were afraid they'd lose their charter revision over the four-year term. So it, it's different i- in different communities. Uh, as I've said to most commissions and council members, because you guys are the appointing authority, is you have to socialize these issues. And you have to really um make sure you explain them. Have, these forums are very helpful and, and the commission will be continuing to do those kinds of things. Those will be very helpful. But that's to answer uh Councilmember Air's question. Um, it's really a matter of socialization and getting out and getting the word out and what you're trying to do and why you're trying to do it.
And I've said one thing, you know, as, as uh Steve said, I, I don't have personal experience of going through a charter change to um, to change the length of the term. But uh, I, I think the fact that so many communities, including uh, all of Connecticut's largest cities are now at four years, gives a, a pretty uh strong response that, that um, you know, this is, this is where most cities in, in Connecticut have gone. Norwalk is a city that has grown tremendously, uh where the job of both the mayor uh and the council have increased in complexity and, and responsibility. And that you want to make sure that uh your leaders ha- you want to hold your leaders accountable, but you want to make sure that you have uh the ability to judge them based on the merits of, of work that's done over time. And uh, so I think the combination of those two things, the, the example of every other community that has moved in that direction and the growing uh, the, the, the growing complexity of the work because you're in uh such a successfully growing community is an important pairing.
One last point relating to Hartford, and I think the mayor will confirm this. Um, back in two thousand and two, we created a separate election cycle for the Board of Ed. And the thought at the time, when you live old enough, when you're old enough and you live long enough, you see um both sides of the question. The thought was that if you se- segregated the Board of Ed, had their own election, people would come out in droves to uh vote for their candidates for Board of Ed. And that just turned out not to be the case. And so in the last election cycle, the last charter cycle, we, we um brought the Board of Ed into uh the regular municipal election cycle because there was very low turnout. And I think a lot of people felt that uh, um, the candidates were being ignored. So they're not going to be part of the normal four-year cycle for mayor and council.
That's right.
Any other questions?
A quick question. Yeah, yeah. A question. So like, I'm wondering if, if, if it's easier to attract or retain qualified candidates for staff positions with a four-year term versus a two-year term? Like having them actually, you know, commit to two years versus four years? If that's, if that's, that's sort of like a hindrance uh when trying to, you know, trying to uh, uh attract um talented candidates?
I mean, Councilman, I, I think that's a really thoughtful and important question. I found it to be a lot easier uh to, to recruit uh candidates, particularly for jobs that were political appointments. And in Hartford, that is the majority of the director positions uh in the city. Um, if you could offer some amount of job stability and uh particularly if you couple uh the fact that it's a political appointment with the fact that we still had a fairly um aggressive residency requirement, it was very important to be able to demonstrate that they would be coming into administration with some longevity.
Great, thank you, Mayor, thank you.
May I ask you the follow-up to that? Um, and perhaps it's maybe more relevant um from Miss uh Walker as you are going through it right now. How has the switch to the four-year term um recruited, affected your ability to recruit candidates for the Board of Alders? Um, have you found that to increase the challenges, decrease the challenges?
So we, we haven't went through a four-year term yet. Um. The thing about Board of Alders seems to me, since I've been here, I started with, I think seventeen new um colleagues and the turnover wasn't um, it wasn't that much. So a lot of them I'm still serving with. Um, I actually think that the four years might um increase who want to actually serve because it's a lot when you have a family, you're trying to run elections all the time. You're trying to work because we, we are, um, most of us on the Board of Alders work a full-time job. Um, so we're doing this at night. Um, and I think it will actually increase us being able to find people that want to stay around longer. Because I've had colleagues that just got tired of running the two-year terms. So they didn't want to do it no more because it was always running. They felt like they never got a break. So we'll, we'll see more results of that once we actually be into our um four-year term. Because the way we did it in charter, it was not immediate and that was done on purpose. Um, so everything lined up together, us, the mayor, the Board of Ed and everything like that.
Any other questions? Anyone online have a question? Right, I can't see. No? Um, so I think another um topic, we have a sort of a nice array for considering. Um, we've got, I think, nine uh council members in Hartford, fifteen in Norwalk, thirty in New Haven. Um, perhaps that means we're at the sweet spot already in between, but I am sort of curious. Uh, you've pros and cons of, of council size um and how, if at all, that you think that intersects or relates to questions of term um length and other sort of questions of responsibilities and sort of how um the relationship between the executive and the legislative works. Um, and you know, again, and having enough people to meet responsibilities if you're gonna do full budget, et cetera. So I'm just kind of curious from both of your perspectives and from your perspective, Mayor. Um, kind of how that size question plays into responsibilities and terms? Luke?
In Hartford, it's only nine members there. It's only nine members, it's an at-large body.
Right.
Fully at-large versus ours, which is a combination of in district and at-large versus New Haven's, which is fully in district. So again, I'll, I'll, a whole spectrum of, of options.
You know, I, I uh, I don't know if I have a good answer to the question of how the, the, the size of the body relates to the length of term. I'll, I'll think about that as others talk and see if I can give you a, a more thoughtful answer. Um, and obviously there are, there are, I don't know whether you are considering any changes to at-large versus district. Uh, I think there are very clear pros and cons that, that uh can, can speak in favor of both model, mo- models. Uh, I, I liked our model quite a bit. Uh, I, I liked the fact that we had a relatively smart, small council, all of whom shared responsibility for thinking about and caring about the entire city. Uh, that we were in that sense sort of full partners in uh, in every aspect of the work and accountable to the entire community. Uh, and uh, I, I also liked the fact that our council's term was co-terminous with mine, that we were together as a team to be held accountable for our uh achievements or our failures, right? As a, as a mayor, you know, you, you, you want to be held accountable. You want to get out there and make the case, but, but also it's good to have your feet held to the fire. But I liked the idea that we were all in it together and that if we were gonna be successful together, uh, then we had to work together. And uh, there wasn't that opportunity for, you know, a uh, for, for council to be running uh sort of independently from the mayor. Uh, we were, we were all, we were all in it together. And for me, that was a, a valuable and positive thing.
Ms. Myers? Do you want to comment on that? Anything we should share?
Yes, thank you. Um, I believe that running with the mayor is a benefit. Um, I can, look, I come from a, a union organizing background, so I like working with large groups. So having thirty members of the Board of Alders is like easy for me. Even though everybody have a different perspective, they represent, their neighborhoods have different issues, different things that they care about. And that's why I form a legislative agenda where I get all thirty people to agree these are gonna be our priorities. Um, along, you know, with the mayor. Um, but we run our, our term together and that could be plus and it could be a minus. Because you are not working well with the mayor, then that poses a different set of challenges. Um, but so far, so good. It's been going pretty good, having thirty members of the board, being engaged and involved and being um, being intimately involved because they represent five thousand people versus if we had a smaller board, they would um represent more. Um, so it's been working um in New Haven. We've had conversations, uh residents had conversations about maybe changing the number. You know, at the end of the day, some people think it should be fifteen. Some people think it should be this, but we've been successful with thirty. So that's what we continue with during this last charter revision. So it's gonna be up to the next president of the Board of Alders, whoever that will be, in the next charter revision to figure out whether they think a smaller board would be better or not. But for me, the thirty-person board is a benefit. And it's a- actually, I see it as a benefit to the mayor as well. Because when you run and you got thirty people on the doors, if it line up like that.
I, I, I think our council's structure uh works very well. Uh, we have five at-large and we have two from each district, the five districts. But the two, everybody votes on everything, by the way. But when you have two people in each district, that district tends to get more attention. Get to know the people better, you reach out to them, they know who to call and, and, and speak to. I, I think our, our structure works fairly well.
And I think, Mayor, where we can with the at-large positions in particular, we try to get at least three representatives. I mean, in a perfect world, from each district, since we have five, but sometimes that doesn't work. But I, I think we do a good job of trying to get an equal amount of representation from each of our five districts. Any other questions? Mr. Burnett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, uh, yeah, my question is around the support structure for the um council or Board of Aldermen. Um, in terms of how you get work done. Um, here in Norwalk, each council member serves on several committees as a chairperson assigned to each of those committees. And that chairperson has an assigned staff member um that they work with in terms of putting together their monthly agendas and moving items. Um, and, and typically, if there is a question or issue that would go through the chairperson of the committee to then address with the city staff um in order to get an answer or additional information. So, so again, my question is around support structure. How, how do, how does the, the council members and Board of Aldermen get work done? Do they have uh staff members that they go to? Do they go directly to department heads or wh- what's the support structure? Why everyone jumping at once?
Okay. I guess I will jump in. So our committee chairs um actually take all the information and the questions from the committee and they meet with the department heads. Um, we also have a leadership structure um that we meet with the mayor uh every, every other day. Our leadership structure, um, we meet with the mayor every other day to bring concerns back. So our um, our committees of our chairs have direct contact with our department heads.
Plus, in New Haven, um, Taisha, there's the Office of Legislative Services, which provides um some level of subject veteran expertise to be of assistance to the committees. And that goes back, I mean, it's a long tradition again, goes back to the late nineteen sixties.
Yes.
And when I was on the, the body in the eighties and nineties, I had a, an assigned full-time staff person who was a nonpartisan budget expert. I chaired the Finance Committee. Uh, so I didn't, I worked with the finance people in the administration, Controller's Office and the Finance Director. Um, but I had somebody that uh, uh, would, would, would work for me and my committee and our leadership that was not beholden and was not working for the administration and did provide that assistance. New Haven was very unique in that, in that, in that way. Hartford, um, Mayor, you might want to talk about Hartford. I think they're, they're transitioning right now uh from one system to another, but I'll defer to the mayor to talk about that.
No, that's right, Steve. Uh, so, you know, Hartford during most of the time that I was mayor, uh, every council member had the ability under charter to uh, to have an aide. Uh, in practice, council members often would share, uh, share an aide uh in order, in part to be able to offer a higher compensation um to make it um more, more competitive. Um, in the last charter revision, one of the things that councils sought to, there was, there was often a discussion throughout the years about uh I don't want to say professionalizing because I don't want to diminish the, the staff members, but creating a structure that uh that called specifically for areas of expertise, you know, to have a budget uh expert, to have a policy expert, to have a uh legislative drafter. Uh, where the council landed, I think, was a little bit in between. There is uh still the ability to hire general staff, uh, but they're also uh with not that sm- smaller numbers, but they're also authorized to bring on somebody uh to provide uh budget expertise now, I believe. And I'm afraid I can't, I can't, well, I can't remember off the top of my head uh the, the, the language uh, uh, as it was drafted, describe those positions. Council also has the ability, although it was only exercised for a brief period of time under my tenure, but the council has the ability to engage their own legal counsel.
They still, they still have that ability, they don't have anybody on staff though.
Right.
Do you have any more questions? I'm, I'm looking, I don't, oh, wait a minute, um, uh, uh, Mr. C?
Yes, I had a, a more of a comment um for here in Norwalk, uh, because I do kind of like the mayor, the mayor having a four-year term. And I do see the challenges of like the council running on off here without the mayor um and probably having a low turnout. However, here in Norwalk, we do have a challenge with having people make that commitment. So even in two years, I mean, we had two vacancies here in Norwalk because of uh family matters and, and different things. Um, so I think that will be a tough thing um for people. I mean, especially with the challenges here in Norwalk with affordability. Um, might be council members that are renting that might worry that they're, um, it might not be able to stay in Norwalk or different things um for that amount of time. So I think that we will have challenges um with finding people to really make that four-year commitment. And I think we see it with the Board of Ed. We have a hard time like finding people to, to make that four-year commitment. Uh, so I think that here in Norwalk, um, with the council, I think that'd be a, a unless we make some different changes, uh, which I don't know, but like thinking about it right now, it'd be hard to get people to make that commitment for four years. Um, with the challenge that we have, um, even with the two years, um, like I said, we could, we had two vacancies in the last couple of months, um, come. Um, so I think that's something that we should think about.
So Ms. Walker, to Mr. C. Point, have you, how have you dealt with that issue or how often does that arise?
Um, well, we had some people leave off of Board of Alders. Fortunately for us, we haven't had that experience where it was hard to get somebody. By the time the person announced that they are coming off and they put in their resignation, we got two people already putting their ring in the hat, their hat in a ring in New Haven. So since I've been on the board, we haven't had, uh, not one challenge with filling the seats. We're actually going through it now where one of our alders had to leave in, in forty-five days. We already got three people, two people right now that are running for that seat. So I haven't experienced that yet.
Thank you. Mr. Joe, anyone else?
Um, so, you know, we've been talking a lot over the last two sessions about our budget process. Um, you know, about having an unelected Board of Attorney in taxation, um, which makes the line item decisions for our budget, um, at least on the operating side. And I think, you know, one of the things that we heard from, from some folks, um, including the Chair of the E T who spoke about this when he, um, spoke to us last session, was this sense that a, an appointed board was less susceptible potentially to political pressure. Um, was potentially, um, in some way more insulated. I would say that I personally have been also raised issues on the flip side, just to say that, um, when you have folks who are elected being responsible for line item budget decisions, there's also more accountability, right? The Republicans sort of weigh indirectly on, um, whether they in fact agree with the decisions that were made by their spokes. So I'm wondering, uh, particularly since both of your cities have moved to having, um, the operating budget really be done by the council and the mayor sort of in conjunction of, of sort of authority passing back and forth. Kind of your perspective on the role of politics in setting budgets, the pros and cons of having, um, that budget process become part of your political process? Um, and how you've seen that play out in both of your cities respectively?
So I'm, I'm, I'm happy to start. I very much believe that accountability and responsibility should be in the same place. And, you know, I think that budgeting is a central, if not the central responsibility, uh, of, uh, of government at every level. Uh, both to design the budget and then to implement, uh, what, what that budget funds. So I, I'm a strong believer in, uh, empowering and, and giving the responsibility to those who are elected to, to carry out that responsibility. Now, I will say, uh, that said, I, I inherited a city that was in deep fiscal distress. So I can't, I cannot sit here and, and claim that the, uh, that the system, uh, you know, always served our city well. I'm not sure, uh, whether an alternative system would have, uh, resulted in something different. I think that what, what led Hartford to its fiscal crisis and to near bankruptcy, uh, had a lot more to do with fundamentals and the structural challenges, uh, of having a city with, uh, and, you know, some of the most intensely concentrated poverty anywhere in the country, uh, without a resource base to meet it. And a government funding system that relies, uh, almost entirely on property taxes, uh, to support local government. And so it, it got into, uh, a, um, dangerous, uh, cycle, uh, that, um, that led it to the crisis that, that I inherited. So I, you know, I, I say that with the, with the humility, uh, with humility, I, I, I'm not sure I can, can, uh, assess whether we would have been better off over the years that preceded my time. But I'm grateful in those, uh, eight years when I had the responsibility for correcting the ship and trying to get us on a stronger path and build a foundation. I'm very grateful that I had the tools to do that.
Ms. Walker Myers, did you have anything you'd like to say about that?
Yes, thank you. I tend to agree with a lot what he said, but in New Haven, we have a large institution that, um, we have to rely heavily on property taxes in order to operate our ci, our city. I think it's a lot of structural, um, barriers. Uh, but I think we've been doing well. We've been doing as well as we could. We find innovative ways to deal with that. And I think, look, I have a lot of, a lot of views on what I think need to change for us to get in a more stronger fiscal, um, state here in the city, but those things are going to take a long time. And we've been working at them. Um, but I think the structure that we have, um, is fine. We have a very good finance committee that's all elected by the people and we hear their concerns. And when our constituents come and they're talking about things that's important to them in the budget, if there is something that need to be changed, we change it. Um, and, and I just think that we have a lot of, we have, we have a lot of barriers. But I honestly think setting the priorities for the city help us out a lot because we're able to explain that it's just some things we can't do. Um, and we're able to explain the reason why we can't do them. And a lot of people don't understand that, but we've been getting by so far. Um, so I'm not sure whether if we had a different structure, it would be any different, honestly, because those barriers that's there been there before, probably, I know before I was born. So they're probably always be there, right? We have neighborhoods that was redlined in our city, like, and those are the same neighborhoods that experienced poverty and all of those things. So until we figure out those structures, I don't think, uh, having a different structure is actually going to change much. But that's another story for another day because I don't have enough time to get all into that, but the structures are still there. So I think for us to get on a stronger fiscal front, it's some, um, large structural things that have to change in our city. But we've been doing everything we can. We've been putting more money into pensions. We've been doing everything that we could do to keep us afloat so far.
Can I, can I add one other thing? I mean, I'd echo everything that President Walker Myers said applies, applies here too. The, the one, one small thing, just to, um, to point out, our, our Finance Director, uh, we, we have, uh, historically had both a Finance Director and a Budget Director. We, uh, created a structure where we named a CFO, uh, that had responsibility over finance and budget. But the point I just wanted to make was that our, under our charter, the Finance Director, uh, is, uh, protected, uh, for a period of time from, uh, firing unless it is for cause. So, uh, it is a political appointment at the start, uh, but, uh, has a four-year term and, uh, cannot be removed from office unless for cause. So, uh, at the, the, this, never, there was never, we were always, uh, on, on the same page, uh, working hand in hand. But at the, the, the reason for that is to make sure that there was a voice, uh, in the administration that was, uh, given, you know, full freedom to speak up independently, uh, if there were things that were of concern.
So do we have any more questions? Yeah. Sorry, I don't, I'm, I'm looking at everybody and, yeah, so we checked.
Um, uh, so I think the, um, again, one of the other larger questions that we, again, are thinking about is sort of, um, communication structures, how, uh, how citizens really hear from their city, from their legislators? How we sort of make sure that there is coordination, communication? And again, I think some of this gets to the staff number questions that Council Number Burnett raised. Um, but I also am curious, um, you know, do the council and the mayor have coordinated communications? Do they have separate communications? How do you sort of, um, I don't know, I think, uh, Mr. Taisha Myers, you mentioned the sort of importance of, of getting information out, having access to all the information. So I'm just, again, kind of curious, both from a public facing and from a communication between the mayor and council side. How do you think about, um, who is responsible for getting information to the, uh, the key parties? How is that responsibility shared? Where does it rest?
Ms. Walker Myers?
Okay, we, um, hybrid system, our nation, we send out our own, the mayor sent out his own, but sometimes they are, um, joint. But it's the Board of Alders' responsibility to get the information out to their constituents because we do all the constituent services and stuff like that. Um, the mayor also, he puts out, um, seem like daily to me, press conferences about what's coming up and what's going on. So I think we kind of, we do our own thing, but we do it together, I, I guess if that makes sense. But the Board of Alders make sure we get the information out to our constituents. Going on, uh, we all have email lists, um, that we have, we have our staff send out newsletters. So I feel like we get our communication, um, out. And sometime we just hit the doors and put information out, so we have our own structure, but we work together.
Very much same here.
If I can just ask one question, um, because I'm really curious, Ms. Walker. You have so many, uh, aldermen, so how do you set those priorities and what timeframe do you work in with setting those priorities? Particularly where I think you said, you, you know, you get a lot of feedback and participation from, um, residents. So how does that work when you've got so many people championing their own individual communities' needs and wants? How do you get to a point where everybody is, is in agreement as much as you can be with that?
Um, so the last time, um, we set the legislative agenda, we actually did surveys in the neighborhood. So we did the surveys and we let the neighborhood pick what the priorities was. And we looked at all the surveys, we did them in all thirty wards and the priorities was the same. People cared about jobs, people cared about safe, public safety, people cared about education. And when I did again, now people are talking about affordable housing a lot. So that's really how the did our number one time. Um, we did it during the elections one time because you're out there, you're talking to people anyway on the door. Um, but we've done it a number of different ways. We did surveys. Um, what else did we do? Before, we were, we were sending them out to people's cell phones. We were having them drop them off in libraries, having them drop them off at City Hall. We just did a number of different things in a different neighborhoods. Um, and a lot of alders was actually having neighborhood meetings where they were going out and bringing people together. We also had one C Y meeting where we brought everybody that was interested from every neighborhood in the city. And we talked to them about the things that they really cared about. So that's how our legislative agenda was drafted. Um, and we just worked towards those priorities and for the most part, they haven't really changed. I mean, we've added some things, um, but for the most part, they remain the same because people want good jobs. People want public safety, like people care about those things all the time. Um, so it pretty much, uh,
It's a shame that they had a follow-up question. How many staff members? Right.
We have ten staff.
You have ten staff members, okay. And and Hartford, I know, could have up to nine, correct? If you each, each member was involved. That's a very different.
And I know that, uh, the President has another meeting this evening. Am I correct? Am I correct on that, Taisha?
Yes, I have a five-year meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, yeah, it's time, yeah. We could probably, yes, wind up, I know, we really appreciate this, having everyone's time. This has been very helpful.
And, and I want to just back up, Mr. Burnett, did you have any answer about setting priorities? Did you want to comment on that? I mean, it's okay if you didn't, but you didn't want to not ask.
Sure. I mean, I, I don't know that I have that much more to add. It is, uh, it, it's a lot easier with nine. You know, we would just have, uh, I, I, I had a lot of one-on-one conversations with each of the council members just to understand their individual priorities. And as, as we began to, uh, to develop, uh, our budget and, but of course, that communication happened, uh, all, all the time and, in every season throughout, uh, you know, throughout the year, throughout, uh, every week.
So thank you. And, and any last questions? Because I had another son that didn't have an opportunity, didn't have.
Yeah, yeah, I would like to ask a question. And I'm, I'm going back in my notes here and I, I know that I, I have for Hartford that, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, Luke, that, uh, your council members receive a compensation of about fifteen thousand dollars annually, is that correct?
That's right.
And, um, Taisha, do your, does your Board of Aldermen receive any compensation?
Yes, uh, they were receiving two thousand dollars since like nineteen ninety-four, but we just changed that during this term. So they now receive five thousand dollars a year.
I'm sorry, twelve thousand?
Oh, no, 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 two thousand.
Okay.
Now they get five.
I'm going to correct the President. I got two thousand dollars a year in nineteen eighty-nine.
Okay, well.
It was the first year, uh, of compensation back in nineteen eighty-nine, so proceeds nineteen ninety-four.
Yeah, forty, forty-seven dollars.
Forty-six dollars and seventy-one cents.
Rested in the state of Connecticut, right?
But you know, I, I would like to hear from both of you, uh, you know, how you feel the value of that compensation helps your, um, alders or council members to function in their jobs as well as having, you know, all these staff members who are able to help them. I mean, you know, here we are, the fifteen of us making this, you know, silly little amount of money with, uh, no staff essentially. We have an Assistant City Clerk who is there to, to help us out. And, you know, for, for us, you know, most, most of us work full-time. I mean, I happen to be retired, but, you know, most council members work full-time. And so, you know, without any kind of compensation to, uh, you know, uh, you know, take the budget process, right? And put all of those hours in all by yourself, that's a really difficult thing. So, you know, I'd just like to hear you talk about, you know, how the value of the compensation, uh, helps your, uh, your members to function in the job.
Uh, I will take that, I guess. We're doing the same work that we did for two thousand that we're doing for five. I think you should go for some compensation if, if you have that ability because I actually, I actually think that it is a lot of time. I put in, I work a full-time job. I put in equally or sometimes more work for the Board of Alders. Honestly, I'm never off for the Board of Alders, honestly, but I would do it for no compensation. I am just a person of service and I'm just a person that like to help, but everybody's not like me. Um, so I think that it, it would be a perfect opportunity to talk about, um, really for you guys to talk about what that would look like to get some compensation. I'm not saying that you need to be paid like a full-time job, but I'm saying there is some value in that because it, it can pay for the gas for you to get to meetings. Because that's what the hundred and fifty-nine, the hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-three cent was doing for people. It would basically pay for gas. You're going to put out more than that. I go to about, hmm, maybe twelve galas a year at a hundred and fifty dollars a gala. That's not like the compensation never equals to what I put out in my community. I give, I give a, um, around the holidays, I give out turkeys, like I give out turkeys. I give out gifts at Christmas. A lot of that is my own money. And so I just think that maybe you should talk about maybe getting some compensation. And so I just think that maybe you should talk about maybe getting some compensation. Um, and, and more compensation in the fifty-three dollars that you receive or the zero dollars that you receive, honestly.
I, I, I'd just add, I, I do think that the compensation that our council members were paid was, was really important, uh, for our council members. I mean, as I, I don't have to tell you, but, uh, as, as members of the council, uh, but, but for all those, the rest of the folks who are watching. Uh, it's, it's the obligation of a council member isn't just to attend committee meetings. It's not just to participate in the formal parts of the process. Uh, it's to respond to constituents, uh, all the time. It's, it's to, to do the work of representing and of being responsive. Uh, and, uh, that comes with real costs. Comes with real costs to family. It makes childcare challenging. Childcare costs alone, uh, for, for those council members that had kids, uh, could be very significant. Uh, and I think it also does limit the, the, uh, the job options and opportunities that are out there. There are some jobs that are just not feasible, uh, with the responsibilities that come with being a member of council. Uh, so I think having some level of compensation, um, which, which. I, I don't think it's ever going to be set at the level where the compensation itself, uh, you know, is, is the reason that somebody runs for office. But to our earlier conversation about, uh, recruiting candidates, uh, to, to run for office. Uh, it's a difficult thing. It's an enormous obligation and I think the compensation, uh, at some level was important.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Any, I think we're gonna wrap up if there are no more questions and I don't see anyone's hands up on the screen. All right. So I'd like. Good question.
I, I can answer that. It's in both charters. Um, and, yeah, it's in the charter. We created it in the Hartford Charter. In two thousand and two, created that baseline, um, as well as the mayoral compensation. We tried to take mayoral compensation out of. The political fray and equalize it to the compensation for a Superior Court Judge with, with escalators. Correct. And, and, but you're also limited on how often you can have increases by the state constitution. So there's. So you don't get automatic annual increases there.
Steve, just, just to, I mean, the, there is the, that provision by pegging it to the, uh, salary of a Superior Court Judge, there are that increases. For the mayor, there was no increase for council. It was static, uh, I think, and remained static, if, unless I'm mistaken.
I think they have a, uh, you're right. They don't have the, the escalator in the council side, but I think they have the ability to raise it. However, if they do raise it, it has to go to referendum.
That's right.
That's a state statute, folks. There, there, there's no way around it. New Haven is also in the charter and, and I, I'd have, I, I'll let you know whether there's an escalator. I don't, well, um, whether there's an escalator in the New Haven, uh, charter provision.
Yes, we put one in there.
Okay, I thought so. But I didn't remember off the top of my head. Thank you. Nice having the president with me.
Okay. So I think that wraps up our last session. Uh, for the next round of the Charter Revision Commission. And I just want to thank you, Mr. Ned Meddick, for putting such great panels together. Over the last course of the last three meetings that we've had. This has been a tremendous help. And I think this was very good and we've heard feedback that this was very informative and a good thing for us to do. And again, it's something that we can look back on if we've got any questions and we want to move forward with, with some other things. Part of the record. Um, I'd like to thank all the council members for showing up and participating in this. And most importantly, um, Mr. Bronin and Ms. Walker Myers, thank you for joining us this evening. I know you, I think you've got another meeting to head out to. I don't know how you're doing. Um, but we so appreciate you giving us your time and sharing your thoughts and the same thing with you, uh, Mr. Bronin. We appreciate that. And so if there are no other, um, comments, questions, suggestions, we're going to, uh, have to make a motion to adjourn. All right. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you.